Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome, everybody. Well, we'll just jump right in. First thing on, item on the agenda is the public comment tonight. So invite anybody that has any public comment. Nothing online. Kelsey?
No.
All right, hearing that, and we'll move on. First, we have Matt Stoffel with us, PFM. Review the bank bids. Thank you.
Yeah, so last week, the city took bids on the $700,000 financing on the private placement for the project on the square. The city received three bids, First Bank of Hampton, First Security, and United Bank and Trust. The low bid was from First Bank of Hampton with a TIC of 5.3513. So if you remember during the budget process, we went through all the public hearings. We set a pre-levy for this loan, which authorized you to borrow, or levy for this loan ahead of actually issuing the bond. And at that time, we had built in a 6.5% interest rate, which you can see First Security was at 6.37% and United Bank and Trust was at 6.5%, so right kind of in line with where we had thought. So the First Bank of Hampton bid, we think, was really good. Had all the terms that we had outlined in the proposal. About $23,000 lower in interest cost than we had originally anticipated, which is a five-year note, so that it's about a little bit over $4,000 a year, which will lower the debt service levy impact by about 3 cents over the life of the loan. So, you know, we would recommend awarding to First Bank of Hampton, but certainly can answer any questions about the process or any questions you might have on the loan.
What's the NIC stand for?
Net interest cost.
We wanted $700,000, but it wasn't going to be actually $700,000?
You're going to get $700,000. The net interest cost is how much the interest will cost you to pay it back. So you'll borrow $700,000, you'll pay back $800,000 and $7,000.
So what's the construction costs going to be?
We don't know.
It could be a lot less, right?
Yes.
And if you don't spend the money, then you can either pay this loan off early, so we built that into the loan, or you can use it in the debt service fund to buy down the tax rate year to year.
Okay, thank you.
So you have those two options.
Thank you.
But it can't be spent on anything else legally.
No bonuses?
Nothing. The project or the debt service.
Any other questions for Matt?
I know this is a workshop, so at Thursday's council meeting, there'll be a resolution to award, and then there will be an authorizing resolution, which is actually a legal document that binds the city to the loan, sets out all the terms. It'll be 20-plus pages, and allers will prepare that.
Question for Ron. Do you know when the bids are going to be let?
No, it'll be after the asbestos abatement portion is completed, and that's, I guess, I think by October 1st, that should be completed. And then they'll work on the finalizing of the plans and specs for the stabilization of the building, and then bid letting after that.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Matt?
Thanks a lot.
Yeah, good job. I think it came in very nicely, so.
Matt, so for Thursday, you are not going to be available, is that correct?
I could call in if you'd like.
I didn't know if you anticipate you have any further questions for the resolutions that basically are approving these, so, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. Moving on, La Luz Central request for street closure for their back-to-school.
That's me. Hi, Jennifer Burnham. I'm here as a board member for La Luz. Jeanette could not be here, so I'm reading a letter for her. City council members, please accept my apologies for not being able to attend this meeting in person today. My name is Jeanette E. Colt, and I'm submitting this request concerning the upcoming back-to-school night for La Luz. We are requesting the temporary closure of the road directly in front of La Luz this Friday from 3:00 to 6:30 p.m. The purpose of this closure is to facilitate various activities for children as part of our back-to-school night celebration. Closing the road will provide a safe and expansive area for students and their families to enjoy games and interactive experiences, enhancing the overall event. We have already spoken with the immediate neighbors in the area, and they have all expressed their support and approval for this temporary road closure. We believe this will be a valuable and enjoyable event for the entire community. Thank you for your time and consideration of this important request. We look forward to your favorable decision. And so the street closure would be from the stop sign to the alley on Second Avenue on the north side of the building, and I guess that's it. So do you have questions for me?
I have a question. I believe this is just the same thing as last year.
Yep.
Because I know the school supplies and that the family focus group that I work with have been provided this, and those also have been provided at the National Night Out, and this is traditionally followed.
It's all the same.
No, I think it's a great thing.
I had a question, but you just answered it.
What was it?
It looked like it was, you were trying to, wanted to close the whole block this time, but it's still just to the alley, and that's always worked. And they do a great job of notifying the neighbors and stuff there, so.
Anyone else?
Questions for Jennifer? Sounds like something we should do it. All right, thank you.
We'll have that on Thursday's agenda.
Yep, perfect. Next, Ms. Fender.
Hello, I'm Amanda Fender, and I put in a request to have assistance for traffic control along the Highway 65 for a 5K we'd like to do. The 5K would start at the Wellness Center, and it should only cross that Highway 65. We should stop right before First Street. If I can't get police help, happy to get a volunteer to operate that crossing, too. And this would be for the HD class of 2004 scholarship fund that'll help our community schools. We're looking at giving out $1,000 scholarships for our kids.
So how long, how long do you look, how long do you think you're going to need?
Usually a race is about 45 minutes, so, from start to finish. So it shouldn't be longer than that. They won't, they wouldn't get there unless we've got some, like, super-fast people. Jim, you're probably super-fast. You should get there real fast. Probably the first, probably 10 minutes in, and then 30 minutes. So probably between 10 and 30 minutes would be when it needs assistance, so. And I'm happy to get a person in a vest with a stop sign, too, if that's acceptable to the committee or the council, sorry.
Mayor's got a vest.
I'd like to see a vehicle there with strobe lights on, you know.
Yeah, if we could.
It'd be extra safe.
Yeah, I, I.
It's just.
Police presence would always.
People are watching.
Yep, police presence would always be the best thing, but if you guys don't have.
You know, that's all up to Mark, how his staff, staffing is.
I do have a question.
We have had this a few times in the past on a scholarship fund and the color run. We do typically send an officer up there by Casey's to stop the traffic ahead of time. If we try to do it just our staff, we get the sheriff's deputy there, too. That way, if one of us is called away, then there's still somebody there. So that's how we typically do it, unless we pull an extra officer in, but not uncommon.
Thank you.
Jerry, did you have a question?
I do have a concern about blocking off 65. It is a very important route and busy route in town. Is there any way we can alternate the race route that we didn't have to cross a busy highway?
There's not a really good route around town for a 5K that doesn't cross the highway, because 5K is 3.1 miles.
Can you take it out to Beads Lake?
Where would you want us to start?
There was a, we had 5Ks out there.
Oh, in Beads Lake?
Yeah, friends of Beads Lake have them out there.
We did used to have races at Beads Lake. I'd prefer to stay in town. Wanted to use the Wellness Center, wanted to promote the Wellness Center. I did also talk to the Wellness Center, maybe wanting to do this in the spring, too, as a fundraiser for the Wellness Center as well. I talked to Chad about that, so. I'd like to keep it in town if we could, just because I think it helps the community. And then obviously, you know, runners are in town, they're going to stop at Casey's. You know, if you're at Beads Lake, you can just pop right out of town, and then there's really no.
They'll come into town. I don't know, I just, it bothers me to see 65 blocked off and runners. Yeah, you got your first people out of the blocks, then you have the ones that are walk and run and walk and run. And I don't know, I just think it could be a long string of.
It's not blocked off the whole time, right? It's just as people cross, and they're just like a crossing guard for kids going to school.
Exactly, like the crossing guard of kids going to school.
But kids going to school, you hold them up until you got some kids there, and then you walk out. And you can't hold up a runner's time to wait for a bunch to escort them across. I'm just concerned about the safety issues.
It's a valid concern.
How many runners do you anticipate?
It's our, this would be our first year, so honestly, I have no idea. I think when I did, when I did the zombie run a couple of years ago, I think we had like 25. So, I mean, I was at Eldora, the Eldora Run, there was right around 30. Let's see, went to the Alden Run, there was right around 20. So, I mean, it's not a huge number of, I'm anticipating that 20, 30 range. I'm hoping with cross-country being started and going, that I can steal some cross-country kids. Also, one of our classmates is a cross-country coach for Charles City. I'm hoping she hauls her kids down here and has them run, too.
So you think that starts at 9:00 and probably done by 11:30?
No, starts at 9:00, done by 9:30.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I figured I was running, so.
No, no, like, I can do a 5K at a slow time in 35 minutes. Walkers are usually about 45 minutes. And that's not, I mean, that's right in the middle of the race, so it's not going to be too long.
It's not a long, a big span of time that we need it closed. I read, maybe I read it wrong, but I thought it's just going to go out and back?
Yep, out and back.
Is that correct?
Yep, so it'll just go to First, we'll turn around right before we cross First. Right around CB's at the bike tray, trail. And we'll have our volunteers along the route, too, so there wouldn't be any other necessary needs for additional assistance.
And that's Saturday morning, the 4th, you said?
Correct.
So is this not a regular business day?
No, no.
Another question I had was for, do we need DOT involvement since it's a state highway? But Mark, you've done it before, and there's nothing that we need there from the state, so, okay. Any other questions for Amanda? Anybody, are we, are we in a great kind of consensus that we will go ahead and do this and get it moving?
I think it's a great idea.
Are we voting on it tonight or Thursday?
No, yeah.
Promote the school and the city and health issues and the Wellness Center all wrapped into one.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think we're getting more and more events in town, and that's what we need. We need stuff, people can show off, show off for town a little bit, so.
And that is the same weekend as the Herman Nielsen event, so we're kind of hoping to, maybe get some weekend travelers. I know one of our board members lives in California, and she's planning on coming for that weekend specifically, too, so.
Any other comments?
I don't have any.
If we're good, if we're okay with that, we'll put it on Thursday.
Perfect.
All right, thank you.
I'm just going to stay right up here.
Okay, next up, Amanda Fender.
Yeah, thanks again for having me. So this is on behalf of the soccer board. I have another soccer board member, too. She might want to speak as well. But we just wanted to give you guys an update as where we were at as a soccer team. And, you know, we're growing and growing and growing. It's not the first time you guys have heard this, won't be the last, probably. But our numbers are up to a total of 310 kids in soccer in our Hampton youth soccer program. We have 98 in the 3 through 5 grade. We have 86 in the 6 through 8 grade, and we have 126 in the K through 2nd grade. So we've got a lot of kids. We've got 27 teams, 51 coaches, and I think 40 of the, 40 individual, so 51 people have to coach, but 11 of those people do it twice. We're really good at suckerin' people in. Thank you, all of our soccer coaches. So, you know, we've been operating on the field out at East Park. We've made it work. Doug Tar's been great at handling our requests as needed. We got some lights out there, thanks to Mid-American, so that's been nice. This year, we did have to move the K through 2 field to the other side, just due to parking, due to space constraints. So we know that long-term, we want to continue to see our program grow, and we're just maybe thinking about, you know, what are the next steps? How do we continue to grow? What do we need to continue to see this program expand? You know, we Googled it and used ChatGPT, and it was looking at six acres. So we don't, you know, just kind of throwing that out there, wanted to give you guys, you know, where we were at and kind of what the future looked like. Jocelyn, do you have anything to add?
Mr. Laimos?
Have you ever approached Church of the Living Word, to use the old football field there? They use it for some junior high practices and stuff. You know, the bad thing is, you've got spots all, it's kind of nice to have it all at one spot, but for that, it's a great parking there, and.
So, yeah, and our biggest issue is parking, honestly. I mean, I don't know if anybody's driven by East Park on Saturday during soccer season, and makes you want to cry a little bit. I actually end up parking in the residential areas, because I'm just not, I got a big truck, and I'm not dealing with it. So the Church of the Living Word actually has, they have football going on during the same time we have soccer. So they have fifth, sixth grade tackle football going on then, too. So I don't know how, and I know, so I used to do fundraising for fifth, sixth grade tackle football as well. And they used to practice four days a week, and then scrimmages on Saturdays and Sundays and stuff. So I'm not exactly sure how that would look. I know we couldn't use that as a practice. We could potentially use it as games, but you'd be moving fields, painting lines, that kind of stuff, too. But it's a great idea. Yeah.
Mr. Robson?
Amanda, I live in that area, and I'm really impressed with what's happening down in East Park and the number of kids that are involved. Not only that, but the number of parents and the grandparents that show up. I've never played soccer, but every year, it grows and grows. My question is this. I know that people are thinking about a solution, and until that time comes, or if it comes, is it possible to split the seasons of the soccer? So that perhaps you'd have the 126 K through 2nd grade at a different timeframe than you have the older children? Is that possible until a solution is found?
We thought about doing a spring season, but the problem you run into is then you got soccer and, or softball and baseball started. So you're kind of pulling from, from those activities to go into soccer instead. But, because we've looked at doing that as well.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I think, I think just, I don't think we've, we've lost sight of the soccer fields, because we know it's a big thing here. And it usually comes around about soccer season.
You're welcome.
Getting our conversations going started again. But I know, and we're trying, I know Ron has talked to some people, you know, trying to partner with like the schools and stuff like that, finding some ground and some area that we could work with to put something in, until at such a point, we could put the recreation complex out there, you know. But that's, that's a lot, a lot, a lot of money.
A lot of money.
So, you know, we gotta look at downside in that, you know, pizzas, or find another spot. But I know definitely, we're definitely looking at it and trying to, trying to alleviate your pain.
We appreciate that. I mean, I'll put another 5K on if I need to.
We have no growth here. I don't know how other communities like Parkersburg or Denver, or some of the others that have new activity fields, I don't know how they do it, if they're partnering with the school, or if they have private people kicking in money or fundraisers. It's just one of those things where the city can't do it all.
Right, right. And we don't have, I mean, we don't have the resources to do it all, either. I mean, we're all.
Right.
And that's what, you know, we did a survey a while back, and the survey said how many people are in favor of a recreational place? And, oh, a lot of people were, and then how many people want to pay for it, and nobody was.
Nobody else paid for anything.
You know, and I see that, the state, the mood of the state is, you know, it's going to be just primary services, police, fire, you know, that type of thing. And these recreational opportunities, unless they're funded by private people or partnerships, they're just going away. And, you know, if it was any other time but now, I still am not convinced that they won't take away the local option sales tax from us, or I'd just say, okay, let's come up with a plan and revote the local option sales tax, 50% to the Wellness, or to the rec center, or the rec field, and then police car, fire department, and whatever else we have. But I don't believe that that's going to be a solution either, because I think sooner or later, they're going to take that away from us. That's going to hurt a lot of towns. I mean, we buy a police car every year from those funds.
Right.
So, and.
That's our street money.
Yeah, and fire, fire truck money, and swimming pool money and stuff like that. That's going to really hurt, so. But I wish that was an option, but I don't even think that's going to be a valid option.
The price tag of the rec center, if I remember correctly, is like 1.3?
Seven.
Oh, seven. That's close to 1.3.
It's close.
That was in 2018.
Yeah.
That's a good numbers, too. Yeah, those are accurate.
But.
Those haven't gone up.
Yeah, like.
Sorry, the sarcasm.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate what the mayor said. We understand the stress that it gets, it puts you in, and the pressures for soccer. And we, you know, we are aware of it, and we're having conversations to find solutions for the short term, and then while continuing to plan for the long term. So we're working on it, and we hope to come up with something. But we are definitely aware of it, but appreciate your input, though.
Just because this is a workshop, and I'm just thinking about it. Can we write grants through this, like, can we write grants through the, like, for the city, for this fund specifically? Or would a motion have to be in place in order to write grants for that?
Well, I think you have to have something specific set up, like a project, in order for, to be funded by a grant. And, you know, so that's not out of the realm. I think it would just have to be an official project, so that you could spell out what it is you're doing and what you're raising funds for. But, I mean, it's possible.
I took one grant writing class one time. Do you have more to add? No, I just.
I do have, I do have one. This was an idea I threw it out a while back, and it was not well-received, but my dream would be to see all of the Hampton youth sports come together, form a nonprofit, and start writing for grants and bringing some money into town so that we can help fund the rec center. I think it would be fabulous to have a rec center. It would bring a lot to our town, but we need help. The city cannot do it.
Right.
It just can't.
Right, and I think.
But something to think about. I would love to see that happen.
Yeah. Which is funny, because everyone, usually all the people on the board are on all the other boards, too.
Well, there you go.
Exactly.
We have, what, three? Thailand's on the baseball board. Molly's, Molly's one of our coaches, she's on softball, so.
So, so, yeah, I don't know if you got your schedules yet, or if you're that deep into the senior, but if you could get me a schedule, when you get one, I'd like to go down and watch some games and just take a look at it and.
And if you follow our Hampton youth soccer Facebook page, all of the games every day are posted on Saturdays. So whatever games are played that day are posted there. And we usually have games going on from every Saturday, I think we start the 22nd of August? 23rd. Yeah, 9:00 a.m. start, and then we're usually done by 2:00?
Okay, yeah, definitely, definitely get down there and take a look at some stuff and watch some soccer.
You should watch.
All right, anybody else? Thank you for coming in. We appreciate it, and we will still continue to partner.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, thanks. Next up is the discuss dog registrations. Patrick?
Yep, this is something I wanted to bring up, because it seemed like it was a crux of the last couple of discussions that we had. And, you know, every time it seems like we have a dog issue, we do increase the number of dog licenses that come in. So I think the time that the one dog attacked the other dog, I think there was 56 licenses after the second incident here with what we had a couple of weeks ago. I think we're up to 80 licenses now. So it seems like every time we have an event like this, we do get more, more licenses. That's not a good way to operate, of course. You don't want to just promote dog biting to get our licenses up. I guess to me, I keep hearing people saying, well, so-and-so's got a dog, and so-and-so's got a dog, and so-and-so walks their dog by my house, and I don't know if they're licensed or not. The rule is, if your dog is licensed, it's supposed to have a license on a chain around its neck. And so, again, this is something that I feel I hate to just always throw at the police department, but I don't certainly want to go door-to-door on this thing, but there's enough people walking dogs around town. You can see if they've got a little blue tag or a little red tag that would identify as their license. And if the police department had a clipboard with this on it, date it and have the person sign something, may need to redo this, or give them something for the police cars that say, okay, your dog's not licensed. You've got one week to bring this in, signed by the vet or signed, you know, whoever has the license in the registration and the vaccinations and stuff, and bring this to City Hall. But I would just put a clipboard with two dozen of these in every car, and it's almost like a warning. And we got one week, and if you don't do it, then we're going to follow back up, and you're going to do it, or else we're going to just fine you for it. And to me, is the only solution I can see on this, is just being aggressive on this. I'm tired of the complaints I get, well, so-and-so's dog barked all night. Well, when the officer went down there, did they check to see if it was licensed or not? I never hear a resolution on that. And so I would also like to have one box in here to determine if the dog has been shipped. That could help a lot, if you had a file like that. The only difficult part of this, and the chief would have to correct me if I'm wrong, is I believe that the database is at City Hall and not necessarily accessible by the PD, correct? What, I'd like to get Mark, Chief's thoughts on putting flipboards in police cars and doing this. I mean, every day I drive around, I see people walking their dog.
Yep, I'll say that we currently do enforce the pet laws, but it is typically enforced as a result of neighbor complaints, dog at large, dog bite. It's usually a result of some sort of incident. We could probably start with this idea, and people. It's usually a result of some form of incident. I, we could probably start with this idea, and people walking their dogs and seeing that, but I don't see that as an end-all, be-all, as I'm betting most of the responsible dog owners walking their dogs probably have them licensed, or a good portion of them. It's probably the ones that are cooped up in the house, that are getting out the front door, never leave the yard, that are not registered, but we can always start somewhere.
I also, I sympathize with the mail carriers and, you know, back when I was a kid, we had our dog tied right around the mailbox, that was where the post was, and then I know evidently we talked to about, hey, don't have the dogs out when the mail comes, because you always knew at that point in time, the mail came between two-thirty and two-forty-five, you just didn't have the dog out then. So, I don't know if we ever revamp anything on this twenty-five feet, or hundred, what, a hundred and twenty-five feet away from the door, or the mailbox, or whatever the post office wanted, I don't know if that'll exactly fly or not, but.
I don't know if there'd be a dog allowed in town if that was.
Yeah, I mean, they're all pretty close to that, so, I'm just trying to start somewhere and get the ball rolling on some sort of a a warning system of, hey, you got a week to get your dog into City Hall, and get the fee paid, and let's get it done.
And one of the things we've been doing recently, as we've reached out to the vet centers, Ackley, Sheffield, Hampton, is when they are vaccinating these dogs, to educate them on getting them in for the city license required. I talk to them about us making postcards, giving them, to them, so they're made available to hand out as they're getting their dog vaccinations done, so.
Mr. Laimos?
I don't think it's, it's like trying to enforce the grass ordinance when people blow grass in the yard, or trying to enforce the electric scooters. You just can't catch them. I mean, you can catch a few, but it just makes more work for the PD.
Yeah, it's work, or if we don't like it, then just say the hell of a license and don't do it.
Can we put a notice on the water bill? A small notice?
We're limited on the space, I'm not sure how much, we have like one sentence? Yeah, is it taken up by anything right now?
No, it's where, it's not right now, but it would be like where we put the water quality report.
Okay, okay, so, it's possible, on a temporary basis, until the next thing comes up.
I mean, at the last dog hearing here, we had the front row of folks that had the violations. From what I could tell, he didn't get a newspaper, and he doesn't listen to the local radio station, so, we could blast it on there twenty-four-seven, and then put it on the front page. I still don't think people are going to get the message on that, as far as that goes. I mean, we can try, but shy of sending everyone a postcard, or when it's time to renew, do we send out a postcard, hey, it's time to renew your dog license, and send it out to the current dog owner and have them redo it?
We don't do that.
Then somebody else on Facebook the other day says, state law says, you only have to do it once. Well, that's not a Hampton's law. It's like, oh, don't say that, because that's how stuff gets spread out, but.
Yeah, ours have to be renewed.
Yeah, I'm just, and it's on the anniversary date of the license, so if it's May twenty-fifth, then it's May twenty-fifth, so. I'm just wanting to start somewhere on this, because it's an issue, and it's for the public safety, ultimately.
I had a question for Mark. Mark, you had said that you had worked with the local veterinarians about a postcard system, where when they get it vaccinated, they'll give them a card to send it. What kind of response did you get with that? I think that's a great idea.
They were open to that.
I think that's a wonderful start, anyplace. That's a great idea.
Here's my thought, instead of giving them a report, or a postcard, vets could have these on hand. Here is your dog license. Fill this out and turn it in. I did have a question, and I think you partially answered it, because I did talk to the mail carrier the other day, and he wondered, when there was a dog complaint, does the officer always check to make sure the dog is licensed and rabies are up to date, when they follow up on those complaints?
Typically, any dog call we get, we check all three things, yes.
Okay, okay, and so.
I can't say that that happens every single time, without looking at data.
I wish it would, and so if their rabies are not up to date, is the dog impounded? Whether he's been vicious or not, if they.
If it's at large?
If you have a dog complaint, and you have to follow up on it, and you ask these questions, and they're not registered, their rabies are not up to date, what happens?
If it's not at large without rabies, we don't, we won't take it.
So, what happens? Does that just fall through the cracks? Do they get a warning?
They'll get issued a warning or a citation.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, because we do have fines for that.
Yes.
They don't have their registration.
I've also talked with mail carriers, and I was told, you know, they know where the dogs are at. So, if we could coordinate with them, like a postcard, like they do with their food drive, and whether we pay for that, or whatever, have a postcard, then when they deliver the mail, then they can drop, okay, they know this house has a dog, they can put that card in with the mail.
And that was discussed with the postmaster, but I don't know where he kind of fell on that at the end. I can follow up with him.
But I think, well, you know, it'd be well worth the money, I mean, we paid for that, you know, then they can deliver it themselves.
Yeah, if they're willing. I'll bring that back up to the postmaster again.
I just, I just want to jumpstart this somehow, no matter, postcard, stopping somebody on the street, I just want to jumpstart this and get it rolling. I think that mailing postcards on due dates would be the, you know, if you're looking, you know, you do it the first month, hey, your dog license expires this month, send out a card, your dog license expires this month for, you know, the dog you have. That'd be a good start to get them in the practice of every year, so, I just knew we needed, we need a start, a place to start, and that's.
I do think that vets send out reminders on rabies vaccination is due, could they not also? And by the way, have you had your pet registered again as well?
One of the things is, not all of the animals they see out there are Hampton animals, so that was kind of brought up in the discussion, but, yeah.
And I think the education is something that we need to stay on that, you know, whether somebody can't, don't get the paper, or they don't listen to the radio, or they can't read, or, you know, some days I can't even talk, so it doesn't, you know, it happens. But I think the education, and I know we've done it a couple times a year for quite a bit, since I've been in the city council, and I think we've got to continue that, and get something out there, and hopefully they'll read it and maybe talk to somebody, or, I don't know.
Because I think it was funny at the last dog bite thing, had two people in the front row didn't know that was a law, and, you know, I wonder how many other dog owners were in the audience that didn't have their dogs licensed?
Probably about thirty of them came in between the last dog bite and this one.
Yeah, right. So, and I hate to see dog bites as the way to boost license renewals, but.
Mr. Dunn?
One thing that my staff believes might help is that if we coordinated the renewal of the pet license with the vaccination terminate, or the end of the vaccination, and they get re-vaccinated, that would trigger, okay, now your license needs to be, you know, where, right now, they may get a vaccination that's good for two years, but the dog license registration is only good for one, and so they don't think to come back for the renewal of the dog license, all they're thinking about is the vaccination, so.
A lot of times, and like this last dog bite, it was an expired registration, it wasn't that it wasn't ever registered, it was an expired registration.
So, he knew about it at one time?
Yeah, a lot of people don't follow up at the second, third.
Or do we need to go to a two-year license?
Yeah, we can.
Rabies is three years, isn't it?
Three?
Rabies is three.
And if we do that, require a chip. Most people want a chip because, just so their dog doesn't get stolen.
Right, or if it does run loose, you can identify, you know.
Right.
I did talk to Zach about the chipping, and, I mean, we do have chip readers here, but if they get the chip put in, and I can't remember this conversation, because it was quite a while ago, but if they don't register that chip, then we're still in the same boat we were before. You know, sometime, like Hampton, whatever they put in, they'll keep track of that themselves, but won't register it in whatever database this is, and then Ackley will do the same, so you're going to have to try to, yeah.
I think we need to focus on one issue at a time, and right now, it's the licensing and the vaccinations.
Right, there's a lot of, lot of, lot of pieces to it, you know.
I just knew we need to have the conversation without any sort of an ordinance tied to it, because I just want to get this done.
Yep, yep. Yeah, I think, I mean, a lot of, a lot of good ideas, I mean, how do you put them all together, or coordinate them, and stuff like that, I mean, this is definitely a start. So, let's put our heads together, and let's keep it, keep it alive, and keep it, keep it going, and do something with it, and if not, then it's the next dog bite, we'll talk about it again, so, I'd rather not do that.
All right, appreciate that. Thank you, Chief, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, Chief, you just will stay up there, we got the nuisance report next.
Yeah, I've been working with the guys on getting the list kind of cleaned up over the last month. Over the last week, we've written seven municipal citations, so we're waiting for court on those. We had four new notices go out over the weekend, and we had four court cases pending in addition to those seven, so currently awaiting court dates are seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven of them, so. And then we're still working with the guys to get more out, and while the weather's still good, because I'll remind you that there's a twenty-day waiting period for court date, so once we give them the notice, it's five days, twenty days to get the court date out there, depending on the day, so it can be anywhere between twenty and twenty-six days, and then whatever the judge gives them, so I want to try to get as many out now, to get them ahead of the cold weather, before everything's buried, so, you're looking at forty-five days, essentially. But that's all I've got for nuisance, unless there's questions.
How long does it take for a court case, if your officer's coming, sitting in court, is it an hour?
Yeah. The problem's not getting to, the problem is waiting the twenty days out, which is unbearable to us, it's unbearable to a lot of people, it's unbearable to the neighbor, but there's just no way around it. We've talked to the attorney on ways to shorten that, and it's a law, so, there's, it's nothing we can do with that.
You have one officer that does all that?
No, we have, one officer does the south side, one officer does the north side, and then I kind of try to watch over the whole thing. I spend at least two hours every day on nuisance.
Mark, is there any way to get the reserve officers on board to help you with these nuisance observations? If you're spending that much time and that much money, wouldn't it be better to get some of the service officers, the secondary officers to work on this?
We only have two reserve officers, both of them are certified with full-time jobs elsewhere, I can approach them, but it's hard enough to get them even here on a weekend to cover a shift, let alone during the week.
But they have, they have the ability and the authority to issue these citations, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, anything else for Chief Morrison? Mr. Laimos?
So, we have, how many city employees? Sewer, water, streets, parks, and cemetery? Is there some way we could get them on board to report nuisances, and would they have to be some sort of an officer to?
No, anybody can report it.
They do, they do report things they see.
A lot of times, we get them from the people mowing the lawns, city staff that goes in the, sometimes we don't see behind the houses, if they're going in to check and meet, or fix something, they let us know. We do depend a lot on neighbors to see the stuff that we don't, so.
That's good to know.
All right, anything else?
Need a cat?
No.
Absolutely not.
It's not on the agenda.
Don't put it on either. Be voting on Thursday.
All right, thank you, Chief. With that, we'll just adjourn this workshop. Thank you.